We'd like to call this evening a special meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open for roll call.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
President.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Here.
You have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Have one notice to read before we begin in accordance with Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020 dash 48, which continues to limit any gatherings of more than 50 people, and Executive Order 2020 dash 44, requiring the provision of video, audio, or telephonic access to meetings, and the CDC recommending social distancing of at least six feet between persons. City halls implementing changes and restrictions for the city council meeting on September 1st, 2020 while complying with the Open Meetings Act. The council meeting will be conducted in person with members of the council present in council chambers with plexiglass barriers. Department heads in their offices and some city staff in Room 404 with the ability to remotely answer questions while maintaining a six-foot distance. Fifteen members of the public and one member of the media will be present inside council chambers. Temperature screenings are required upon entry to City Hall. Members of the public and media are invited to watch through the live stream, YouTube, Television Channel 22, or through WCBU radio. Submissions for public comment were received through the city clerk's office. The agenda, minutes, and video podcasts of the meeting will be available online through the city's website. I'd like to ask everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection,
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its citizens, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent.
Madam Clerk.
Our first item is 20 dash 221 is a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Councilmember Rigenbach?
For the approval.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Moore, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Item 20 dash 2222 is a request to adopt an ordinance establishing local cure program financial support conditions, authorizing the mayor to execute the certification.
Mr. Manager. Mr. Manager, did you want to run over that one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item that you have in front of you is simply a certification required by the state of Illinois for reimbursement through the coronavirus relief funds. The state has it. It is called their local cure program. We're eligible by formula for up to $4.7 million of reimbursement. We have about $1.1 million of direct reimbursement we'll be submitting initially. We'll have some other expenses that'll run through the end of the year that we'll be submitting, but we do need to have this certification passed by council to submit for reimbursement.
Any questions for the manager or a motion? Councilman Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
20 dash 125 is a request to approve the recommended 2020 to 2021 budget restructuring as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and you have a handout on your desk.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'd like to do, I do have a slide deck that I'd like to walk through. So just kind of as a recap, we're down to just a couple of decisions that are left that we need to work through to finalize in order to balance out 2020 and then move ahead as we look ahead towards 2021. So moving on, the first couple of points, just from an economic standpoint that I wanted to share with you, and this is from a website called tracktherecovery.org. Here, this shows the number of the percentage change in small businesses that are open as of August 8th or August 7th, and we see that here in Peoria County, we're down over 20% of small businesses are closed. So that's a change, but it's in a much better position than it was as of April. So we're starting to move in the right direction there. Also, the percent change in small business revenue since the pandemic has started is down 21%. So again, the economics of that isn't very good. As we look at economics and then we look at the unemployment as well, the Peoria MSA had a, the fourth highest unemployment rate in the state at 13.5% in June, and the city of Peoria's unemployment rate was 16.8% in June. So we're higher than the metro area, we're higher than the state right now in terms of unemployment. Statewide, the state has lost 508,000 jobs compared to July of last year, and we have as a state the 10th largest unemployment rate of any state in the nation. So this slide should look familiar to you. This is one that we shared with you, which is our initial projections when it came to the pandemic in COVID-19. And we shared this with you in April. This is as of April 7th. We anticipated that we were going to be seeing a drop of local sourced revenues by about $26.7 million, a drop of state shared revenues by $14 million. We knew that we were going to get a little bit of federal money coming in and that we would see a fifth, a reduction of $15 million of debt service that we would be issuing for a total reduction in revenues of $54.5 million. We anticipated that we were not going to see any federal support or any additional state support, that we would then see that it would take us a little while to get back on track from a revenue perspective, and that we really only anticipated getting back to about 75%. So now if we can move forward with having four months under our belts, the numbers have changed a little bit and they've changed to the good. We've seen that our local sourced revenues now, we're only anticipating that they're going to be down 18.9 million. That includes property tax, home rule sales tax, hotel, restaurant, and amusement tax, our stormwater and sewer fees, and then licenses and other permits. On the state shared revenue side, the good news is that we're only anticipating about a $1.7 million reduction in state shared revenues as really I think we're capturing the corporate income and income tax revenues from last year as those payments came in. So we're seeing that, which doesn't bode well as we look ahead to next year's revenues. Again, we've seen that we do have some additional federal sources, and then this anticipated that we would be dealing with the $10 million in borrowing, so really just a reduction of the bonding of $5.2 million. But overall, the reduction is 27.6 million. We think that we'll be at about 80% on the recovery curve side, so that's some good news as we look ahead. But overall, the overall projections are this. We're still anticipating property taxes will be 5% down. We're still anticipating that our home rule sales taxes will be 19% down for the year. Hotel taxes, we're anticipating 34% reductions in hotel taxes through the end of the year. Restaurant taxes, 17%. That our stormwater and sewer revenues will be down 20%. That licenses, permits, and fees may grow slightly at about 3%. We've been seeing some strong building permit growth. I think that's a reflection of people being home, looking at their houses, and looking at what they need to be doing. We've also had some commercial growth, which is a good sign. On the state sales tax revenue side, that's, we're anticipating to be now down 9%, and then income tax and corporate income tax down 6 and 14%. We had projected those pretty conservatively, so that's a change over 2020's or 2019's collections. On the revenue shortfalls for 2021, now we start to see that we're bouncing back. And while these percentage increases look good, and they are good in some ways, we're still, if we take a look at this, over 12% below what we had originally planned when we adopted the biennial budget last fall. When that was adopted, we're still going to be about 12% below that budget estimate. So even with recovery in sales tax numbers, recovery in hotel taxes, recovery in restaurant tax numbers, those numbers aren't going to be where we had anticipated them to be because if you remember, when we were putting that spending plan together in 2019 for 2020 and 2021, the economy was humming at a pretty good pace. So that's the reason for those shortfalls. So to just quickly summarize the actions that we've taken to date, we have $20.6 million of lost state and local revenues. We have no debt for capital projects. We have cut capital by $21 million in 2020 and an additional $13.3 million in 2021. We have proposed, and you have approved, the restructuring of debt to capture some savings for this year so that we could lower our debt service payments by $10 million. And then we've also cut 45 FTEs resulting in about, and $3.3 million of operating expenses, which will result in reductions as we look into 2021 that should be close to about $6 million annualized of operating reductions. So we still have several items that are still left, two items that are still left to be really addressed. Is the council, does the council have any appetite for any public safety reductions? And what do you want to do on the short-term borrowing side? So this slide just simply shows you the reductions that we've had so far. The council has approved the elimination of 31 vacant positions so far. We've had three early retirements. We did have four staff that were reassigned, that we did that, one in the back office of city hall departments, one in community development, and two in public works, whether it was through the lighting program where we were able to keep two electricians onboard, or whether we were able to look at just the reassignment of individuals for a short period of time. We've been able to keep them due to additional revenue coming in like the EDA grant. So that's allowed us to keep some employees on the payroll for the time being. We've had seven layoffs that will be scheduled to begin today was the initial start of some of those layoffs. We do have several people that will be working on long-term recovery that will be reimbursed with the coronavirus relief funds that we have. They will be slated for a layoff on December 31st once those funds run out. So this allows us to keep them on for four more months, but then we'll see that their employment with the city will end. So we have seven layoffs for the total of the 45 positions. All of our non-union positions, which is both management and then the non-union positions, are taking 17 furlough days between now and the end of 2021. So that's about a 6% reduction in pay. And then with the action the council took last week, adopting the voluntary separation initiative for fire, we've had an additional five firefighters that have elected to take the VSI. There were four prior departures earlier this year, meaning we currently have 14 vacant positions in the fire department budget at this point in time. So the questions that are outstanding, you know, obviously the public safety reductions, you know, we discussed just a little bit last week that administration wasn't recommending any additional police reductions other than those that previously had been acted on by council. With the additional retirements that we're looking at coming through the police department, it will stress the ability of the department to move up to full staffing. And then with the council not supporting the reduction of two engine companies, I guess we need to look at alternatives and does the, I guess the fundamental question is, does the council support any reductions? And as I mentioned, there are five firefighters that have indicated that they would take the VSI, that if the council does want to move forward with any reductions, it could reduce the number of potential layoffs that we would have. Use of fund balance. With the outstanding question about borrowing, the question is, how much are we going to be spending down in our reserves? And I think that there's a couple of points that I want to make here. First is that, is that really due to the significant effort of the departments to curb spending, all of our total fund balances across the entire organization have increased $15 million since the beginning of the year. So that's, that's good news, that we've been able to do that. Here's the, one of the reasons why. One of the reasons why is that we have open capital projects from 2019 to 2020 that totaled $26 million. So that doesn't include the capital spending reductions that you've already made of the $21 million and then the $13 million in the following year in 2021. So that's an additional $26 million that we haven't yet spent yet that's still out there for various different projects. But operationally, on the operational side, we anticipate that within the general fund, with the spending that we continue to look at through the end of the year, we should be exhausted in the general fund. November and December are usually two big months for us in terms of spending as we start to see payouts as people are retiring. We also have our, a lot of our debt service payments that we have to transfer out. And our payroll and operations on, for just on the operating side, for payroll and then whatever kind of commodities we're spending amounts to about $6 to $7 million a month. So that's really what we're spending and what we're going to have to do. So you know, the challenge is, once the cash is gone, it's gone. And the city would have to make decisions about restricting operations. We may have to look at additional furloughs or additional reductions if we, if we continue to spend down our reserves. And then I think, you know, this goes without saying, but if there's a second wave of the pandemic, we'll have to further restrict our operations and our spending. And that's a concern, is that if we get to a point where there is a second wave, what are we going to do at that point in time? So what we had recommended and to you previously was a $10 million working cash bond that would generate about a million dollars a year of need to be repaid. So we'd have to repay that back, cost about a million dollars a year to repay it. We do think that with revenue growth, that we start to see that we're climbing out of this pandemic, that it will allow for us to absorb that repayment, so we wouldn't need to have an additional property tax to cover that, that $10 million. If however, we go any higher to borrow, if you wanted to say you wanted to borrow $20 million or you wanted to borrow $15 million, then we'd have to look at having a repayment source tied to that revenue stream. One of the other issues that we have that's outstanding is the Civic Center. The pandemic has really shuttered all of the operations at the Peoria Civic Center. Nearly all the activities through the end of this year and through the first three quarters of 2021 have been suspended. And the Civic Center really can't issue any debt on their own without a referendum. And in discussions with, with their finance committee chair and with their, their board chair and their executive director, they need four to $7 million of assistance through 2021 in order to keep the lights on. And so there are really three options that we can go forward with. One is, as we go out and we seek working cash, we could look to seek additional funds for the Civic Center. We could provide the Civic Center with another loan of our existing funds and then have them pay that back out of future HRA tax proceeds. And then the third option, which may not be mutually exclusive from the other two, is that we look at talking to our legislators about helping us to provide some assistance to keep the Civic Center open and operational. So as we look at, at the budget restructuring with the two pending issues that we have left, the issue of public safety or not, and the issue of borrowing or not, that with the plan that we had presented to you last week, that we would be looking at a plan that would grow our reserves citywide by $5.8 million over the next four years. It doesn't get us out of the woods in terms of the general fund because we still have to cover public safety pension obligations, but it would provide some balancing of the budget over that, that period of time if we were to go forward with that, that $10 million of borrowing. Now, if we don't do any of the public safety reductions, then the, the operating side will be more expensive. And at that point, then we'd have to look at, probably looking at making some decisions more like in 2021, and then again in 2022, and then again in 2023 as we go forward. So that was really the, kind of the gist of where I wanted to go with the presentation. I know that, that there were a couple of slides in here that I included at Councilman Grab's request with some ideas, and at this point though, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you, and if there's any questions of council of what we've put together here so far, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Any questions for the manager in terms of information presented to this point? Councilmember Grab.
Thank you, Mayor. Manager, there are numerous members of our Illinois congressional delegation who have told municipal officials that another aid package is coming. If not this year, then next year. Do we need to have, not necessarily now, but if that were to occur, we would have a policy discussion here as to how we would apply any such incoming revenue? Well, my first recommendation to the council would be, don't borrow any money. Don't borrow any working cash. If the revenue comes in, use that to plug that gap, right? I mean, if it's there for revenue shortfalls, that would be the place to go because that, the, the cost of borrowing, you have a 20-year obligation to pay that back over time. And if we can, if we see something that's, let's say it is $10 million that we get from the, from the federal government, that would eliminate that need to go and have to borrow those dollars. On these credit lines, I know a motion was made last week, which, which encompassed the $10 million credit line. If we have a strong recovery, we certainly know in Peoria, real estate sales have been great, like, I mean, there are some promising signs on the horizon, but we don't know what the virus is going to do. As you indicated, no one knows. But that being the case, and we're able to borrow at fairly low rates right now, and if we were to get some assistance from the federal government, we could retire. Is that what you're saying, this credit line rather quickly? Well, I, some of it could be timing, right? I mean, if we look at when we would go out to the market to borrow, if we knew that Congress was going to come back and deal with this in September, that's one thing. If, if it looks like they're not going to do it until January, that would be another. But we could certainly look at structuring any kind of, of working cash debt since we're really doing it for operational purposes to try and, you know, repay that back. I'd have to have conversations with our bond council about how we could do that, but as long as we make those bonds callable at a certain period of time, we should be able to pay those off. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager and/or Councilman Ruck Regal, on the Civic Center, if you can perhaps enlighten me just a little bit. What sort of activity is going on in the Civic Center right now, or I mean, during this COVID period? Or is there any?
I can take that. For inside the building, that has closed down. You can probably imagine that with the precautions that we've all taken because of COVID, the ability to put large groups together obviously isn't happening. There are a lot of acts that were scheduled to be here on the calendar that have, the good sign is not canceled. A lot of them have postponed until a future date, but we don't have future dates for those at this time. So obviously, a lot of the, the work that goes there, the activities that are there in large venue items, so that becomes a difficulty. The activity that you see in the parking lot with the COVID testing site, that is probably some of the only activity that's happening there at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. So the, you know what, on an annualized basis, what then just maintaining the building and paying, paying its bonds costs if, if nothing is going to go on inside that building?
And, and that's where the variance in cost comes from because there are different stages of taking that down into how we maintain that. Obviously, there's got to be security, there's got to be, you know, utility. The, the building being shut up and not utilized, actually will have a wear and tear that's a little different, but it doesn't stop wear and tear on it just because people aren't utilizing it. So there's some various in cost. We've run some different scenarios, and that's where you're seeing a difference in what it would take to be able to keep it, to keep it operational to be able to reopen. The other part of the cost that has to come into play is, while they have reduced their number of staff significantly, there are a couple of people that they still have on so that there's communication going back and forth for future events and future pieces like that. So it really, there's a range of that, and Patrick, maybe you have a slide on where those different scales are. I don't have that here with me. We had it at the, at the last meeting for, for the.
Thank you. It, it will be anywhere in the range of four to $7 million, just to really mothball the, take care of what's outstanding, the payables that are outstanding, and then kind of wrap everything up and close it up for the time being, but also with an eye towards opening back up. Many of the concerts are still kind of targeted towards that fourth quarter of next year. And then for us though, the bigger issue is we have $6.5 million and it grows over time of, of debt payments that we have to make for the 2005 improvements to the Civic Center. So that, those will be paid off in 2026. So, you know, some of the idea could be that we look at how can we restructure the working cash payments to maybe backload that once that debt drops off so that we could, we could then, you know, maybe extend that out and pay a larger portion of that at the back end so that we can, we could take care of that time of, of paying for what we need now at that point in time once that other debt drops off. So that's something that we need to talk with our, our financial advisors about to see if we can help them out in that way.
Okay. I, thank you for that. And I think that, you know, we're all, I'm not too terribly concerned about that long term. I'm much more concerned about where we are today. What kind of HRA are we getting in there now?
Well, that, that was if I go back into the slide. Let me back up here. Right now, we're anticipating about a 34% reduction year-long in the hotel tax revenue.
Okay. Pardon, pardon me. How about dollars? Because we're talking about dollars in the report.
I was just, I'm just pointing out the percentages.
Okay.
In terms of the reduction. What we're, what we're looking at is, is going from HRA tax revenues that we had collected of close to $10.5 million to collecting under seven. And when it's under seven with what we started to pay in the first quarter of the year, we're not going to have enough to pay the, the debt service. So there's, there's been no operating support for the CVB. There's been no operating support given right now for the Civic Center because we, we don't have any HRA tax revenues to give them. We have to set it aside to be prepared to pay for that bond payment when that comes first. So, so as we, as we take those monies, as they get collected, we're setting that aside so that we can make the debt service payment on the Civic Center bonds first.
Okay. Is the four to $7 million worth of a. Is the $4 to $7 million worth of assistance, are you saying that that does not include debt service?
It does not include debt service. This is just, this is $4 to $7 million for the Civic Center's operations because they're not seeing any operating revenue coming in from any events or any, so that's just what they have that they're anticipating that they need.
Okay. So we're getting, now, you spoke of hotel tax. We also have restaurant and amusement. But were you talking about that total or just hotel tax?
I was talking about all of it, all of it. Hotel, restaurant, and all of it combined.
Okay. And so our next, and I don't know if you know this, Mr. Manager, our next debt payment, or perhaps Councilman Ruckregal, our next debt payment would be how my, next, in a year's time, would be what?
Roughly about $6.5 million due, most of the principal is due at the end of this year.
Okay.
So we had some interest payments that we made in June, and then the rest will be due in December.
Okay. I'm out of time, Mr. Mayor.
We're not running on a timer tonight. Go ahead.
Okay. Doesn't, doesn't appear to me to be all that drastic, and perhaps we can pick this up at a later meeting. It seems to me that we have some good cash flow. We don't have the cash flow we'd like.
Well, the Civic Center doesn't have any cash flow right now, and that's the issue.
Well, when you, when you talk about segregating the, or setting aside the HRA tax, but that is for the Civic Center.
It's for.
For their bonds.
The debt service and the bonds.
Yes.
Correct. That's on our books. The operating expenses, the $4 to $7 million we were talking about on that slide on the Civic Center is on their books.
We have some excess HRA that we're anticipating.
Not this year.
I misunderstood you then.
What, I just looked back here and got the numbers. Our actual, or our revised budget numbers for HRA taxes in 2019 were $11.1 million. We're projecting right now for this year $7.7 million coming in. So the $7.7 million pays the $6.5 or $6.6 million in debt. And then there's a little bit that's been left that we're going to be distributing out. Some of that, well, HRA tax money comes back to goes into the road funds. That was an action council took to move some of that into roads. Some of that then goes into paying the CVB and the Civic Center, but that was only done in the first three months of the year. Since that point, we've stopped because we're not seeing the revenue coming in because the world changed in March, and we just saw everything turn off. So, so it's a significant drop in revenue, and we're not anticipating by 2023 that this gets back up to the level that it was in 2019.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager and Councilman Ruckregal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmen Sierrahead, you next. Did you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Manager. Can you talk to us a little bit about what our responsibility are concerning the Civic Center regarding capital fund and operating fund?
Well.
And I know, I understand the HRA taxes and paying the debt down, but is that our responsibility for the operating part of it? And what is SMG or the new name, what's their responsibility as far as operations?
Well, SMG is a contractor. The Civic Center Authority is a special purpose unit of government that was created by the Illinois General Assembly and is an all intents and purposes a municipal corporation. You appoint, as the, with the mayor and the advice and consent of the city council, you appoint the members of that board, and they then are responsible for overseeing the operations of the Civic Center. They can't issue debt without going to referendum. They could come back to the city, which they've done on two different occasions, to ask the city to issue debt and then pay for the construction and the renovation of the Civic Center, which was done originally and then was done again in 2005. So your main obligation as the city is to make the appointments, make sure they're operating properly, and then to make sure that you're paying the debt on that side. The operations, that's the responsibility of the Civic Center Authority. How they manage the operations is their responsibility. Who they hire to manage the operations is their responsibility. And they've hired SMG as their manager to run the operations of the facility. But we're also in a period of time where, you know, this is unprecedented, and we're seeing this, where we're seeing these types of industries that have been predicated on having people in hotels, people in restaurants, people coming to different events, all dried up. So we're in unique times.
Issue some bonds to, or debt to help them out. People in that business don't, they would not look very good for us, right, to issue bonds for operation? Am I correct in saying that or not?
Well, I think that it's, you know, even with our debt restructuring that we have, we're going to have probably a negative outlook. But I wouldn't be surprised right now if in the bond market, everybody has a negative outlook just based upon where the economy is as people are going out.
And on the bond for us, a $10 million, a million dollar a year repayment, over how many years?
20 years.
Over 20 years?
Yeah.
What is the interest rate? I mean, the double, I mean, money's really cheap right now. Why would we double the payments over 20 years?
This is just what we've been using generally as a rule of thumb in terms of what we've been looking at. And I think I'll defer to our finance director, if he could step to the microphone and talk about what he thinks the interest rates might be right now on that.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So the market right now that we're looking at, just spoke with actually S&amp;P today as part of the review, the rating review for the two bonds ordinances that you approved last week. We're probably looking at somewhere in that 3% to 3.5% average rate for those bonds. Now, that could mean that some of the near-term rates on those coupons are 1%, 1.5%, and then the longer-term rates could go to 4% to 5%. That's why when we did the ordinance, there was a ceiling on the interest rate in the parameters ordinance of 5%. There's, it fluctuates over the life of the bond. So at this point, the average rate would be somewhere in that 3% to 3.5%.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ali was next.
Thanks, Mayor Artis. Few questions for the city manager. I'm on page nine of the slide deck. Incorporated furloughs for some of the administrative.
Yes.
Management staff. Is that in one, is that in the last line or?
That would be in the last line as well.
It is.
Yes.
Do you know, can you estimate the amount that's anticipated in servings for, from furloughs?
I couldn't have to dig for it. Let me see if I can find it, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, that's all right. It's, we can, I can find out later. And then what was the original recommendation for borrowing? How did, was proposed originally?
When we were, when we came to you in April and said that we were concerned that if the economy bottoms out like we were anticipating, we were thinking $30 million might be the working cash number we would need. So as the, as the revenues have improved, that's allowed us to reduce that borrowing number down even further.
Okay, right. So in terms of engines, I think you talked about engines, a million dollars in engine being associated with each one. And that $10 million that we might look at for a loan wouldn't actually cover any, wouldn't cover two engines. Is that right?
Well, the $10 million was looking at, really, it's trying to put the working cash in place so that we can, we can keep our operations going. What we, if you look, if I jump ahead to this slide for you, and this would be, I think, slide 14 or 15 in here. As we look at this, this assumed that the operations, there were some reductions in the operations, by reductions in the fire department included in those numbers. Whatever that number is, if that ends at zero, then that, that number on the operating side, which is the first red line under operations with the negative parentheses around it, that number will increase depending on that. And then that just means that the bottom line in terms of any surplus will be less and any deficit will be greater because of that.
Okay. Bear with me a minute. I mean, I'm really pleased to see the encouraging improvement in terms of the revenue loss from April up until now. I mean, that's, that's very positive, although it's not where we need to be. So as it relates to the Civic Center, are there any private sector funding sources associated with the Civic Center at all?
I think that there, they may get some ad revenues from people that are sponsoring different parts of the facility. But many of them, instead of paying at this point in time, have really just deferred payments and said, maybe we could extend that payment when you get back in business. And so, so there's not much private sector money that's coming in for the operations at this point in time.
And then you spoke of a potential referendum.
Well, I think that, what I was saying is that, is that they have, without going to referendum, the only place they can go for funding would be the city. So, so if they wanted to put a referendum on the ballot, that's one option that they would have. You know, and that would be something that, it wouldn't be in November, and I don't know, I'd have to look to legal to figure out the date that they would have to do, to go forward to put something on the ballot if they were to do something sooner than that.
Okay. And then who would, who would issue that? Is the Civic Center Authority authorized to issue a referendum?
Well, they, they would be authorized under the Illinois law that they could go and ask for a referendum at that point in time. But generally, it's, that's why they've come to the city and had the city, with the HRA tax being established, issue that debt and then structure the repayment the way that we have, so.
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to put it out there in terms of an appetite for cutting fire engines. I don't have that appetite. I mean, I don't think anybody has an appetite for cutting the public safety or, you know, the two engines that we were talking about a week ago were Engine 20 and Engine 4. Engine 20 being on the far north side of Peoria and Engine 4 being on the south side of Peoria, which has the highest number of fires by far. That's, that causes a lot of, a lot of grief in terms of making a decision to cut. If we cut one, we're talking about cutting four again in the highest, most vulnerable area of the city as it relates to fires. So I just want to put that out there that I had certainly considered a way to avoid layoffs, and perhaps that was a way to avoid layoffs, especially with the VSI. But at the same time, how many lives are we putting at risk in cutting Engine 4? So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Regenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the Civic Center for a moment, one quick question there, Mr. Manager. On page 15, you said all events are canceled for the first three quarters of 2021? The first three months, the first three quarters?
They're not anticipating having, having much activity or really concert activity or anything like that until, they've been pushed off until that fourth quarter of next year.
I think that in itself should give us all pause as we, as we have this discussion tonight. I wanted to go to page eight briefly, also the updated 2021 revenue shortfalls. Mr. Manager, again, I appreciate your being clear that even with some of these increases, it's important to remember that those increases are based off the draconian drops in revenue that we've seen in 2020. So, for instance, a sales restaurant tax is expected to be down 17% this year. So for it to be up nine, we're still down eight. So let's not let all those positive signs dissuade us from the fact that there's still a big issue here that needs to be addressed. So that's a critical thing that can be overlooked if you just look at the graphic, I think. Then the last thing I had for now, Mr. Manager, on page 16 on the budget restructuring, you talk about the reserves growing over the next four years by 5.8 million. Would you explain that again? Because we don't want people to think that we're going to have a budget surplus of 5.8 million.
No, I think what we're, what we're talking about here, this is, this was when we assumed that there were three-engine companies being reduced, that we would see the $5.8 million of growth across all funds over the next four years. With that number not, we're not talking about three any longer, that number's going to be considerably smaller.
And, all right, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was just questions on the presentation to this point. So we still have, you know, a long way to go in terms of, you know, potential things that we can do to try to shorten this up. So any additional questions on the presentation to this point? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on that point that Councilman Regenbach was asking about, so the 5.8 million which would go into, which would go into reserves is if we cut three machines. What's the number if two machines were decommissioned as proposed last week?
That number would, would be roughly about $1 million a year, not, not quite as much in 2020 because we're only talking about the fourth quarter, but then in 2021 and 2022 and 2023, that number would grow by about $1 million a year in terms of the operating expenses. So you'd be at probably 154.5 to 150, then 157.5, and then 163 million. So it would grow over time.
So about what, about?
About $3 million over the additional three years, so.
And then if we, if just one machine was decommissioned, what would it be?
You would probably be eating cash at that point in time. So it would probably be about $2 million a year, so you'd probably be eating into cash reserves at that point in time.
If, if we did just one?
Yeah.
And if none were done and we just borrowed?
If none were done and you just borrowed, you would still be eating into cash. And I would point out that from a general fund standpoint, even with the three-engine companies, we were looking at using, decreasing fund balance in the general fund in 2021 by $3 million, then $5 million, and then $7 million over the next three years. That number would be, if you don't do anything, it would be $3 million higher in years '21, '22, and '23. So we're significantly out of balance if we don't do anything.
Okay.
So you'd have to, you'd have to borrow a lot more, but then you're going to be spending a lot of cash over the next couple of years because we, fundamentally, the one issue we haven't addressed is how are we going to pay for pensions?
As a follow-up, if no further reductions were made to fire, how much would you recommend that the city borrow if we don't find any other reductions or revenue source? And if that's possible, I don't know.
Fundamentally, the problem we have is in these out years in terms of how are we going to pay for these legacy costs in the out years? And because the public safety pension fee drops off next year, and you have no way of funding this. So that means that you're going to have to either pull a revenue source out of the general fund and put it towards paying for pensions, or you're going to have to find another revenue source and use that to pay for pensions. And so I don't think you can borrow your way out of it by saying, we're just going to borrow money, put in $20 million because then that's going to help. borrow money, put in $20 million because then that's going to help us. Because you've got to still pay that back. And so you still have, so that doesn't do it. If council doesn't want to cut, then council needs to find a revenue source to fill the gap.
And per the presentation here, is you're thinking that revenue, the only revenue source that you've come up with would be property taxes?
It is the one revenue source that you can set aside to cover your pension obligations and draw a direct line, and everyone can see it as quickly as anything else. And easily.
And I'm not going to make my statements yet. I'm just going to ask questions, if I were at questions. With regards to the Civic Center and the possibility of doing a referendum to raise taxes, I guess, to support it, my understanding, the deadline's passed for that to be on the November ballot.
Correct.
So if it were to go on the March ballot, is that, I believe that deadline is December. Is that, do you know, Corporation Council?
It's the end of December, early January. We can double check that.
It's 90 days. Typically, it's 90 days ahead.
Right. So I think it's December.
The primaries in February.
Although I don't, the referendum itself would be during the general election. So there is time to do that if that was the direction that we went. Hang on. This option on page 17 with regards to property tax, and you have the amount here, what's the percentage of the increase?
So in this, on page 17, this was, at the request of Councilman Grab, we put this together. This was if we were to look at no cuts to public safety, if you were to look at a property tax increase to cover those costs, if you're going to have $10 million in short-term borrowing, and then a $4 million contribution to the Civic Center, you would have to have a $4.8 million property tax increase in 2021.
Mr. Manager? Just a second. Councilman, or Councilwoman, so this is going to be a proposal that's going to be discussed. And this wasn't the manager's proposal. It was included in the packet. This is part of something that Councilman Grab is going to bring forward for discussion.
Okay. So I'm just asking questions about it.
You'll have all night to ask questions when we get to that part of it. This isn't part of, this isn't part of the manager's presentation. All we're trying to do is clean that part of it up, the presentation he made. And then when we begin talking about alternative ideas, of which Councilman Grab has one, it'll be thoroughly discussed at that time. We're just trying to stay on point.
I just would like clarification before we, if he has...
You'll have it, but it's not, it's not up for discussion yet. This is going to be a discussion item when it comes to things that the council is recommending of ways to try to do something. And we're not, we haven't even got there yet because Councilman Grab hasn't had an opportunity to bring it forward.
It's part of his presentation, so I thought we were asking questions on what he was just presented.
We'll have plenty of time.
So that's fine, I'll ask later, that's fine.
Okay.
Hang on, I still have other questions. This last proposal then on page 18, is that, it's a little bit different than the proposal on 17?
Yes.
And then is that also one that's being proposed by someone or another? So you want me to wait to ask questions about that as well? I think that's all I have. Well, one question on page 11, where you have the five firefighters that have elected to take VSI. So those are included in your five vacant positions under fire, correct?
No, that was the council's action earlier. You voted to eliminate five firefighters with a prior council action, probably in June, I think it was, when that action was taken.
Okay, so that five is in addition to the five that selected VSI and then the four other prior departures. So the total that is 14?
You've eliminated five already. There's nine vacancies within the fire department under the current complement.
And then I want to make sure I understand from what you said earlier in your presentation and how it's worded on page 12. It says that five firefighters have indicated they would take VSI.
They've...
Are you saying that in order for them to take it, we have to cut fire?
No. What I'm saying is that we've had people that have signed their paperwork and are retiring the first day they can. We've had others that have signed their paperwork and are leaving at a date within the window. And then there are two firefighters that have already informed us, they're coming in to fill out the paperwork, they just haven't got it in yet. So there is five vacancies that we anticipate by October of people that are taking the VSI.
And that's regardless?
And what I said there with that statement is that if council makes an action to reduce the, an engine company, the VSI does afford you the opportunity to do that without layoffs because they're vacant positions.
But they're taking VSI regardless of whether or not we cut, we make further reductions in the fire department?
Correct. They are retiring and they're leaving the organization.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that and make sure it wasn't contingent upon the city making further reductions.
No.
Okay, that's all I have with regards, I think, to this presentation. Thank you.
I had Councilman Wheeler next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions on the million-dollar figure related to the per-engine cost. Does that take into account some type of a pension proration for not having the long-term obligations of that engine, or is that separate?
No, we're anticipating that the general fund has the salaries, that's in the operating side, and then we have some benefit reductions that we're anticipating if we had fewer firefighters. But we still have, the pension obligation is not going to go away because you still have, between police and fire, we still have unfunded liabilities we have to pay for, and we still have to make those payments for the next 20 years.
And then also, does that take into consideration the actual operation of the asset costs, the upkeep and replacement of the engine and all of those things?
It would certainly change our capital replacement schedules if we had fewer machines in service. But, you know, this was really just anticipating on the operating side.
Just the manpower portion of it. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Kelly next.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to receive and file.
So I think we're doing this all as a...
Hey, I withdraw that.
... comprehensive discussion. We just wanted to kind of get a level set from the manager and where we are, and then we'll go forward with the rest. Thank you. Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Throughout the community, I've been asked, and then this week someone also made this observation, that most people hear about trucks and engines and they don't know the difference between the two. And we've talked about that some months ago. But either Mr. City Manager or Chief Artist, if you could explain the difference between what a truck does and what an engine does? Because when they're rolling, people just see a fire truck. Everything's a fire truck. So could you explain that for us?
Chief?
Good evening. Excuse me, good evening. Yes, ma'am. So, and we tend to just glaze over and call them machines, so I appreciate that question. And we did include the difference in one of the earlier packets for the citizens. The engine is the smaller of the two machines. It has ladders on the side on a ladder rack. It has all of the five-inch hose, three-inch hose, two-and-a-half-inch hose, inch and three-quarter hose. It has 500 gallons of water. The main focus of an engine company on the scene of a structure fire is suppression activities, depending on which sequence they arrive, whether they're the first engine, second or third. But their main focus initially is to find the seat of the fire and put it out. They also obviously respond to advanced life support calls as well. But as far as a structure fire goes, that first and second engine company is responsible for, the first engine company is responsible for finding the fire and attacking it. The second engine company, traditionally speaking, is responsible for providing backup for that first captain who's inside on the nozzle. As far as a truck company goes, let me back up just a little bit. Engine companies also obviously respond to the motor vehicle accidents, along with, you know, all the other things that our companies respond to. As far as a truck company goes, it's very easily to distinguish. It's the big, huge aerial on top of the machine. It's a very, very large machine. And their job has changed a little bit since the rescue squads have been taken out of service. Initially, their main, their initial focus on the structure fire was to secure the utilities, to make sure that the electricity was cut, to make sure the gas meter was either pulled or the gas was turned off. And this is obviously to make the environment a little safer for the interior crews. They're also in charge of ventilation and salvage and overhaul. As I mentioned just previously, with the shutdown of Rescue One and Rescue Two, we've obviously had to adjust as far as what our manpower does. And now what we're finding many times is that truck company is the initial search team, which obviously prolongs the utilities being secured, which is why we have had some problems starting in 2019 with our guys getting hit with electricity. But that's the big difference between the two. The truck companies now respond to emergency medical calls also. And again, since Rescue One and Rescue Two were shut down in 2019, they have the extrication equipment on their machines, so they respond to accidents with extrication.
For that clarification, I'm sure it helps everyone to understand what those machines are doing. Okay, and with that explanation, that the engine carries the water that strikes down the fire, I am puzzled when I see the report that we received earlier, the fire department data comparison, map changes, 2017 and 2019 comparison. It indicated that, and I have a question for you on this, Chief. It indicated for Station 4, Engine 4, that there were 320 structure fires, the total response is 320. But then when it came down to incidents, there were 46 for Station 4. And so I bring the 320 because what that suggests to me, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there were 320 opportunities that someone called and indicated there was something on fire. Is that correct? Yeah, okay, so the reported breakdown between responses, total responses and total incidents. And so there were 320 times that someone in Station 4 territory called and indicated that there was a fire, some kind of fire. Now, as I stated last week, and I'll state again, Engine 4 has received the largest number in 2019 of structure fire responses. And if you layer on, there's been some talk of moving Engine 2 out of Station 8. If you layer on the 128 requests for structure fires that Engine, that Station 8 responds to, that's 448 calls for a fire that would be placed on just Engine 4, if that's the only engine that's there. That's a lot. I mean, I submit that's more than three or four other firehouses combined. And so help me understand the difference on your report where you have total responses and then the other report is total incidents.
So the total responses is the total number of machines that responded to that area. Total incidents is the total number of incidents. And I know it may be confusing, but I'll put it, I'll try to make it a little bit clearer. So on an EMS call, that's one incident, one response. For a fire call, that's one incident, one incident, and a minimum of five responses. So it's, the total responses is the number of machines that have responded to a particular, you know, to a call. And I know it is confusing a little bit, but that's the difference. Incidents is a call, responses is the total number of machines. I don't know if that makes it clear for you, Councilwoman?
Okay, so then maybe what I asked about earlier was not correct because for Fire Station 4, total responses, 2019, 316 structure fire responses. So you're saying that's not 316 fires, but the total number of pieces of equipment for that year that responded to fires?
Yes. I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm trying to find the numbers without my glasses too, which is a little embarrassing. Could you repeat that, Councilwoman, please?
Sure. So on the report that we received, Fire Station 4, total responses, 2019, it says for structure fire responses, there were 316, but for structure fire under incidences, there was 46. So I'm trying to understand what the difference between those two numbers are, between the incidents and the responses.
Sure. That, so, and I don't have that report in front of me, but just going by what you're saying is that would be 46 fire responses and then, or fire incidents, pardon me, and the responses would be the number of machines that responded to those calls.
Okay, so I should be looking at 46 as the number of times someone called because their house was on fire?
Yes, ma'am.
And 316 pieces of equipment total for 2019 responded to those 46 calls for fire?
Yes, ma'am.
So even looking at the 46 in comparison to all other firehouses, 46 is still more, almost close to three-quarters more than any other, the next, the next firehouse had 28, excuse me, 33, and that was Station 13. And so my case is still being made that Engine 4, which carries the water, is still responding to more fires than any other engine in the city, yet that's the one we're supposing to shutter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager before we go into the next section, just in terms of what he has outlined to us so far this evening? You know, the one thing that I, and probably this is one little piece of good news that we really haven't talked about, but when we look at the hotel revenue that's been in the tank so far, and we know there hasn't been any business downtown, literally, and most businesses have absolutely stopped business travel. And I just want to give thanks to the folks, Mark Peterson and those folks, because they did open up Louisville Slugger late and had to modify safety concerns for all the teams that were coming into town, but they were able to salvage part of their, part of their year out there. And as a matter of fact, they worked really closely with the folks that are at the Peoria County Health Department to come up with a very strong safety plan that was actually utilized by other venues in the state because of the measures that they put in place. So a small bright spot, it wasn't anywhere near what they were expecting this year, but they did do a very good job of keeping their, the young kids safe that came in for the tournaments and did put a few people in, the hotels out near the shops, and I'm sure to help sales taxes at the shops as well. So I'd mention a little positive news there. So now we'd be at, and I'm not seeing more lights, but, so we'd be at the portion where hopefully we can just go around the horseshoe to anyone who has thoughts on how we might be able to address this budget deficit that we still have. And if we can do it, hopefully in the form of motions and seconds... And if we can do it, hopefully in the form of motions in seconds, we can at least get a feeling for if there's support for that or not. So floor is open. Councilman Grab.
Well, I think once we establish in our minds what is important for us to fund, reflective of our community values, the budget pieces will fall into place. Who among us feels we have too many police officers and too many firehouses with a city that's grown to 50 square miles as we've made reductions in the area of public safety? One's overarching philosophy will drive how one votes on this budget. Are we right now in a position in Peoria where we're overprotecting our citizens? Each counselor must ask himself or herself that question. Are we top-heavy with firehouses and firefighters even though we recently cut two fire rescue engines, 22 positions? We have too many police officers even though a number of years ago we had 250, we're going to be lucky to have 218 out on the street in January. Once you decide what is our core mission, you'll make certain that those operations are funded. Some of you may disagree with my philosophy on what we should fund first and foremost, and that we may need to move heaven and earth to ensure we have that funding. But I do want to say this, so a little bit of an aside, I'm proud of this Peoria City Each and every one of the members on the council, even those that I didn't vote with, I think are being very, very thoughtful and want to make the best decision for our citizens. This is one of the most reflective and deliberate councils I've served on. We are really at an inflection point in terms of how we're going to deal with something that hasn't occurred in 102 years. We can choose to respond intelligently, keep our people here, preserve our real estate values, and ensure that first and foremost, when we go to bed at night, we know that our citizens are as safe as we can possibly make it, so. So I think counselors and mayor, once we, we're at peace with what we think is important, then we can vote intelligently on what the important thing is to do. Now, I personally will say this, this is animating how I think. I think focusing right now on our reserves, it's important, but it shouldn't be primary in the midst of a crisis that last occurred 102 years ago. Think about it. Why would we focus on that right now? Right now, we should be focused on what keeps our people living in our neighborhoods, wanting to live in our neighborhoods. What's keeping them, their family members, safe? And what kind of budget we're producing that will dig them out of a big storm the next time one hits, and it doesn't have to be a heavy storm. We've already made cuts which have been very damaging to public safety in the area of public works. You know, we talk a lot about the fire department because that's been the whipping boy for a long time, for many, many years. It's been viewed by some counselors as a little piggy bank they go to because they don't think it's going to matter what the staffing is there. Based on my experience, staffing at some point, ladies and gentlemen, counts. It's my field of education. As a principal, how could I be expected to accomplish with students the same result with an average class size of 42 compared to 28? At some point, staffing matters. And as I've gone out in my position as either an at-large council person or now second district, proud to be the second district councilman, I've tried to explain the fiscal exigencies that we have. I've tried to explain, and I've heard you do this, Mayor, when you thought it would be helpful, and I think it's helpful tonight, how much money the city derives from every dollar of property tax collected. Then Mr. and Mrs. Homeowner, or our citizens, when you pay those taxes, what do you want us to fund? What comes first? So this budget blueprint is going to reflect what all of our values are, what each counselor's values would be. Now, I've been consistent since 1993 on what I think needs to be funded first. I'm boringly consistent. I've never swerved from the idea that public safety is our number one responsibility. But when I say that, public safety is now public works. It's what happens when we have that big storm that hits and our ability to get people out of their neighborhoods if necessary, to do the essential things in life or get fire trucks down a street, a snow-packed street. Code enforcement, tearing down unsafe structures. We are basically funding a budget that is all about public safety. It's more than just any one department, and we have cut about 300 positions, full-time positions, in the past, manager, 13 years?
20 years.
So when it serves my purpose, I always quote you, manager, but when it doesn't, I don't. But anyway, we all really have to have an honest conversation over it, and it doesn't have to be personal. So I don't mean to be another Socrates, but once we answer these questions, the budget will fall into place. And we will find ways of even borrowing and paying back. You see, I have absolute confidence, Mayor, that we're going to be rebounding in '21 financially. I believe that. I don't know it 100% for sure, but I believe revenues are starting to come back now. I believe there will be further assistance for our municipal governments. We can't count on it, but I think it will come, hence the reason I asked the manager we're going to have to have a policy discussion about that. And he said, "Well, I'd recommend we pay down any credit line that we have if we get $10 million from some stimulus package," or $5 million, or one cent. And I really appreciate it very much, some of the questions that you were about to pose, Counselor Jensen. Sometimes we ask questions when it's appropriate, it seems to fit, and we shouldn't be straitjacketed when we're trying to flesh something out at a particular point in time, given the context. So I'm listening to all of my colleagues tonight. All of you know where I stand on this. It's no secret. The whole community does. And now you need to vote your consciences. And again, one last thing, I would not focus on building the reserves now when we're not through a horrible crisis that hasn't occurred in 102 years. Let's get through the crisis first, and then let's start building up our reserves. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to hopefully put a motion on the floor along this? Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will put a motion on the floor, and I would appreciate being the first one to talk or speak after the motion if there's a second. I'd like to move that we close two engine and accept, or try to raise $10 million in the bond as outlined by City Manager, Mr. Urick.
Seconded by Councilman Euler. Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I was silenced, and there's a lot of things that happened that made me very upset. And because of that, I voted no. We have present a local 50 here tonight, we have the fire chief here, Fire Chief Artist, and we had many, many discussions over the last four months. And they know where I stand with this motion, that I know they're not surprised by my motion. I feel I was put in a box last week, and again, I was by very smart and intelligent people, and I didn't react very well. As a retired professional hockey player with my background, you don't have to be a professional player to understand what I'm going to say. If you played any sports at all or you coached any kids, when things go bad, you're under a lot of pressure, you always want to go back to the fundamentals of the game, and you always want to go back to the basics. Now, this past week, I've received the most amount of texts, phone calls, and emails that I have the last 40 months have served this community. And I want to thank all of them because they were on both sides of the issue. I had some great conversations with a lot of great people, and I want to thank them for reaching out to me. Now, getting back to the fundamentals for me, I decided to go back to my campaign material four years ago when I ran for this position. My number one reason to run at that time was cutting taxes, property taxes and helping businesses. Those were my top two issues when I ran four years ago and I was elected. The 5th District pays more taxes than any other districts in Peoria. And they would be the most affected, they would be the most affected by tax raised. Station 15 and 20 in my district have the worst effective respond time of any other in the Peoria area. I am opposed to closing Engine 20, but I am willing to work with Mayor Artist, Fire Chief Artist, City Manager Urick, and all my colleagues around this horseshoe to try to equalize the effective respond time for all the districts. Because I find it very, very unfair that our effective respond time for the 5th District is sometimes twice and sometimes maybe three times longer than, three times, just think about that, three times longer than some other district in Peoria. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ali?
Thank you, Mayor. Can the motion be read again, please?
Madam Clerk?
The motion is to decommission two engines and borrow $10 million for operations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Within the motion, we only are talking about two engines, but we're not specifying which two engines. I'd like for that to be part of the motion as well.
As I said, part of my motion said, I didn't, well, not part of the motion, but my explanation, I want to work with all people involved in this to try to equalize the effective respond time for all districts. So we're all, and they're not going to be exactly the same, but I'd like the 5th District effective respond time to be in line with all the other district. I believe, to answer your question one more time, although, or a little further, is I believe, now, everybody I talked to this last seven days or so, they want my people in the 5th District to let the professional make that decision. But I am opposed to closing.
Okay, thank you for that response. Last week, we were talking about Engines 20 and Engine Four. If that is not on the table and we're just talking about two engines to be determined later, I'd like to know what the parameters would be to determine those two engines to be determined later beyond the response times. If anyone can answer that question for me?
I think we need clarification from the maker of the motion. I mean, if the motion is to, well, we just need clarification from you. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Well, as I said, I will let the professional make the decision. But I would like to work with all my colleagues, and the chief and yourself, to find out what the rules would be, how would we select those two engines?
Mr. Manager, I'm not sure how you would interpret that. We went from letting the professionals decide to we. So I think we need, I think everybody needs to understand what we're voting on here. Are we voting, how do you interpret the motion? And what would be your, the way that you take this vote going forward?
Well, I think that Councilman Seer's motion is stating that he wants to have the discussion about how to equalize the effective response time, which is how soon we can mobilize the number of units on scene to fight a fire at any given point. And I'll defer to the fire chief if he agrees with my interpretation of what effective response force means in terms of that from a response time perspective, chief?
Is this on? Effective response force is getting 16 personnel on the scene in eight minutes or less. And I'm not, I don't want to get too far into this, but I'm going to reiterate exactly what I said last week. If we are mandated to shut down two machines, it is going to be Engine 20 and Engine 4.
Okay.
Thank you.
I had Councilman Grab and then Councilman Kelly.
Counselor Seer, I know you to be a man of great integrity, and I appreciate your very generous motion. I do want to put something out there, because I think we need to consider this. Chief Artist, I know a lot of folks think that fires usually aren't going to be quite as severe in the new construction areas of town as compared to, let's say, some of the older neighborhoods where there is older architecture. In practice, how does that work? Chief Artist, is there, are there studies that correlate newer construction with more durability, ability to withstand the ravages of a fire?
Councilman, thanks for that question. As we've maintained all along, this hasn't changed.
The new construction out in the 5th District is lightweight construction. Many of them have wide open rooms. They burn faster, they burn hotter, and they're more susceptible to collapse, which is why we've been adamant, if this change is going to occur, that's why we've been adamant about Engine 20. And as far as Engine 4, it's the principle of the matter. It's a principle of not having the backup there in, I won't even say safe amount of time, a less dangerous amount of time. We're not making this up. Contrary to what some have said, we are not being theatrical. We're not being over the top. These are factual statements that we have not changed since forever. This has not changed.
I got that clearly, Chief Artist. And I respect every council member's attempts to come to a solution to this. But I do want, you know, in my years on the council, we have learned, I have learned many things about what would seem to be an intuitive understanding of fire science, which isn't. So in any case, thank you, Chief, for weighing in on that.
I have Councilman Kelly and then Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that point, I was very persuaded, I was quite skeptical initially about the selections for closing. And I was persuaded by the chief in his response to us several months ago and again last week, that we have not only response times, which I think are very, very important, but also the safety of the firefighters who show up on the scene. And I think that the, I'm not a psychologist, but I think that part of the passion of Chief Artist is that he is speaking for the safety of his people in coming into, so he wants double coverage or something. He doesn't want somebody out there on their own. And so it isn't just response time in my mind. It is also that safety factor for that firefighter that's inside that burning building by himself, waiting for another five minutes or whatever. I don't know how many minutes for the next one to show. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Councilman Seer's intentions are going in the right direction. However, very vague. And as a district councilman who has two firehouses, if you're asking me to want to negotiate and give up one of my firehouses, the answer is absolutely no. And so I can't go along with this motion as is. And if you're making a motion to close Engine 20, I would prefer you amend your motion to make that more clear.
There's no other lights on. So, Councilman, with all due respect, I think that the somewhat ambiguity of the motion needs to be clarified. If we're going to go by the recommendations as presented by the professionals, the chief just indicated that it would be those two machines. If it's going to be a motion to negotiate, I don't know that, I don't know that the chief is in a position to negotiate with. Just saying, so that I think that the request to clarify the motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very difficult question to answer, obviously. I think the resident of the 5th District, I mean, I understand that we've got to cut, I understand what the chief is saying, but I don't understand why we could cut together and have a plan for the city of Peoria that would fit the current situation in Peoria. And all we have, I mean, we're asking the people of the 5th District to, you know, pay over half the property taxes revenues in the city. And then if we raise taxes, which is the mandate I received three and a half years ago, we didn't, the people of the 5th District, and it's, safety is very important. But at the time, taxes, people are just tired of us raising taxes. So I just can't go for that. Like I said, I look at my notes from three and a half years of my campaign material. It was all about taxes, you know, and helping small businesses to come to Peoria. And that was my material. That's what I ran on. And right now, it'd be, like I said, I know it's, we all know what, everybody understands what I'm saying because it's a very difficult situation. But if the chief, he's the professional, that's his decision, I will abide by his decision. But my point is, after the decision is made, I don't know why all of us would not work together and come out with a plan that would be equitable for everybody, all the five districts in Peoria. Because right now, the plan that, where the stations are at right now and the plan that I've seen the last three and a half years is not equitable to all districts in Peoria. I mean, why, there's only an effective response time of five minutes downtown and 12 minutes in a 5th District? I mean, that's seven minutes difference right now, at a 90% tile. It is not fair. People in the 5th District deserve to be safe also. But they sure don't want their taxes, property taxes, to go up and have to pay for everybody else. I mean, I don't, I don't understand why some people or team players are willing to make the tough decision. But people won't want to sit down with me and maybe have a better plan for our fire station, better locations, and be, have a more equitable, effective respond time for everybody? It's hard for me to understand that people would not be willing to sit down and make it more equitable for everybody, all the taxpayers of the city of Peoria. So it doesn't help the motion understand that. But this is what's in my heart right now. I have to accept, I have, part of my motion is to give the authority to Chief, Fire Chief Artist. But my people deserve to be safe also in the 5th District. And I'd like the opportunity in the future to sit down with everybody and talk about how we can make it more equitable and more safe for everybody. And have, all of us have effective respond time in line with all the districts. That's my position tonight.
Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you. Just one more question here. What exactly is the motion, again?
The motion is to decommission two engines and borrow $10 million for operations. And he just clarified that he would abide by the chief's decision? Is that part of the motion?
And the chief's motion, oh, I'm sorry, not the chief's motion. The chief's recommendation is to?
Is Engine 20 and 4.
I've not made a motion to split the question before. So I might need some help with this. So I'd like to make a motion to split this question. First, on the 10 million. And also, if we could vote on each engine that we will be closing.
Is there a second to split the question? I'm seeing none. We have a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Councilman Grab?
Councilor Seer, out of deep respect for you and what you're attempting to do, you're deliberating, a lot of thought going into it. I would just say that a number, and I understand what you're saying. It's been maybe eight years or so ago, Mayor Artist, you, Tony Artist, and I met at 33 Coffee. And Mayor, it was a meeting that you encouraged us to have. And I thought it was a very thoughtful meeting. And your thought was much the same as what Councilor Seer has pointed out, that maybe we haven't analyzed as clearly as we should exactly where our firehouses are. Do you remember that conference that we had back then? I think, Councilman Seer, that's what you're saying. The only problem before us now is through time, we have put these stations where they are for various reasons. And it would take time to start repositioning them. And in the meantime, your motion will have consequences for the entire city. It is not a 5th District decision. And I think my esteemed colleague, Montalongo, understands, and we all should understand, that when you take two machines out of service and there is something disastrous happening in another part of town, and lo and behold, something happens in another area, we have a problem. Because we still have the 50 square mile city and we've reduced our ability to cover that. So the councilman's motion is going to have impact on all the districts and the entire city. And I think you understand that. It's very similar to a spider web. But you're concerned that the alternative might be to raise taxes. And that you campaigned strenuously because you believe from the bottom of your heart that we can't withstand any more taxes. So you've made a value decision. But I would say this, and I want this factored into the thinking. Chief Artist, to what extent is it erroneous to think that cutting firehouses might cause an increase in fire insurance? Is that just a canard? Or is there any truth to that? That people pay for reductions in their insurance?
According to many of the insurance agencies, the insurance rate traditionally will not increase until you drop past ISO 4. This will certainly cause us to drop in an ISO rating. But again, according to quote unquote experts, what they're saying is theoretically it should not affect it. What they will see is far more extensive damage to their houses or businesses when they do have a fire.
Thank you, Chief. I know you'll always give us an honest answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Moore than Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a question, a response to Councilman Grab. I was in insurance for 17 years and did write insurance policies for homes and for businesses. An ISO does come into play. But the question on the application is how far you are from a fire hydrant, not how far you are from a firehouse. Now, maybe since I've been gone, they've added that. But for the 17 years I was there, it was always your proximity to a fire hydrant.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting this motion tonight. Engine 20 is not in my district and not my constituents. But I think that is the absolute wrong move for, for the people in 5th District, especially those who rely on that Engine 20, the only one that they have for all the reasons that Councilman Seer mentioned. And I just, I just can't see that being the logical direction to go. We have four firehouses in 1st District. And I think if there's an area that could be modified, it would be in that district. But 5th, out there, you're leaving a lot of people without any service. And I just can't vote for this tonight.
We have a motion in a second. Anyone else like to weigh in on this? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't support this motion tonight. We have cut and cut and cut fire in the last several years. I think it's been 26 positions in the last two. You've heard Chief Artist say, "This is not safe." He'll do whatever he can to make it less dangerous. I mean, we talk about how we want this city to prosper and grow. I think, you know, I took my oldest son to college last week. And I've always said, even, why did I run for this office? Because I want to make the city of Peoria a better place, keep it moving to the future. I want my boys to want to come back and live here and start a life. And you have to start with basic city services. If we do not, if we're not able to provide the fire safety that we need in a city our size, I mean, we're going to be reducing our force to comparably less than all the cities that are like this, as Chief Artist said last week. I think it is a false choice that we either have to raise taxes or decommission three fire trucks. I don't think that that is a, that is really our choice. I think there are more things to look at. There are things that were brought up in the meetings in March that we still haven't explored. I think it is, it is still possible that we may get government funding from the federal government. I think that it is a false choice. And I am not prepared to gut the fire department just to, during a pandemic, when we may need them even more. I think this is irresponsible. And I think that we are going to regret doing this. So I won't support it. And I hope the majority of the council people will not as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes six ayes, five noes. Voting yes, Mayor Artist, councilmembers Seer, Kelly, Euler, Rigenbach, and Ruckregel. And voting no, councilmembers Ali, Grab, Jensen, Montalongo, and Moore. So we would still be in a position to entertain additional questions or motions concerning the budget? Councilmember Euler?
Mr. Chairman, the original proposal had three engines and we reduced that to two. We've still got work to do on this budget to actually address the gap as well as deal with the uncertain future that's in front of us. And we have a lot of concerns still on the table as to what's coming next with dynamic COVID numbers and potential that this is going to get worse and impact our business climate as well as our citizens over the winter. And so I would make a motion that we freeze all capital expenses in this year's budget that are unspent. Aside from the Stormwater Utility, that's a separate entity with its own billing and management. So that should not be part of this particular discussion as we continue to collect that fee against that fund. And there's work attached to that. But everything else in our capital budget should be frozen.
Is there a second? I can do it by Councilman Rigenbach. Discussion, maybe Mr. Manager first, implications of this, of this motion and the impacts on your ability to run the daily operations?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think first and foremost, as we mentioned earlier when we were discussing cash flow, we have about $30 million, 26 million, I think. we have about $30 million, $26 million, I think, is the, if you take away the Stormwater Utility, $26 million of capital projects that are currently either 2019 projects that have not been completed or 2020 projects that have you approved, but we have not, you know, really started work on those. So freezing them would have the effect of basically giving us pause for four months as we move through the end of the year, if I think that that's what the direction would be. And then it would be then to start back up in 2021 with, with capital spending. So it's a, it's a move that would help us to continue to preserve cash more than anything at this point in time.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Moore first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For clarity, Mr. City Manager, I would like to know specifically what that would mean. And unless you have that information tonight, I'm not prepared to vote on this motion.
Specifics on a project by project basis in terms of what that would mean, but we could certainly give you the list of what the projects are, what's been spent to date, so that you could see what, where those projects are and what we're talking about.
Because right now, we're talking about some blind number, don't know what the ramifications are. I would like to get some clarity, so thank you.
Councilman Grab?
Would the impact of the motion, Councilor Euler, cause us to not utilize the funds that have already been allocated for Main Street from Laura Bradley Park down to the river, or Western from Lincoln on up to Farmington Road? Is, is that part of the impact you want to have?
Everything in the capital budget that isn't currently spent needs to be frozen. It doesn't matter what part of the city it is, it should be equally managed.
Well, the devil's going to be in the details. I'm, I stand with Councilor Moore and you, Manager. We need more information on what the impact would be. We must rebuild our city. Our infrastructure is decaying, and we would not want to cripple our efforts to take advantage of monies that we've already secured from state government. I can't really believe that that would be part of your motion, but I don't know how that would work if we're halting everything, whether we'd be able to deploy and have the community meetings and do the things that are necessary. So I guess we need more, more information on this.
Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have somewhat the same question. I know we recently received a grant, and I'm sure there's probably some money tied to getting a project done. I know it sounds like a, a great motion to be made without having all the details. And I mean, I think it would be wrong to do that unless the city manager can discuss each one of the projects that would be halted at this point. I don't think that's a good motion to be voted on tonight.
I, I understand what the councilmembers have, have brought up, and maybe I would just ask the councilman if, if we would consider, if he would consider, you know, deferring this until the next meeting, and at which time the manager can bring that list forward so everyone understands what those different projects would be.
I'm fine deferring it, but I expect that we would handle this at the next meeting, because it's the same pushback, the same deferral that we have executed on every other item for the last several months that hasn't gotten us anywhere. And so I'll accept a deferral to the next meeting, but we need to be prepared to either deal with that or make alternate motions, because there seems to be a lack of that. Thank you.
So we'll need to put a motion out to, substitute motion to defer the original motion? Councilman Rigenbach, seconded by Councilman Grab. Motion to defer. Anyone on the motion to defer? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Do we have any additional items to be brought forward for consideration? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to bring up something I mentioned to the city manager earlier today. If we could get a list of the 10 or 20 major contracts and vendors that we have, and I'd like us to move forward with requesting a reduction in their bills. I don't know if you could give us a breakdown of what it would be if it was 1% and 3%? I know, I think that that is worth looking into, at least until we get out of this pandemic.
We'd be happy to work on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for our next meeting. I'd like to know what our overtime budget is remaining, and would like to make some kind of motion with that during our next meeting on saving in overtime.
Thank you. Anyone else? Items for either tonight or for our next meeting? Councilmember Grab?
Mayor, as the import of the decision-making tonight ripples through the community, I would like to remind everyone procedurally that those of you who are on the prevailing side as it relates to cutting these firehouses can, can do a motion to reconsider at our next meeting. And there will be ramifications with the public response. Of course, there's ramifications, Mayor, no matter what we do. But we'll see how this plays in Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion for this evening, or Councilor, we, do you prefer this as a receive and file for this evening or an approval of the budget recommendations to this point?
I think if we, we still have the open question of capital, receiving file would be fine.
Motion to receive and file, Councilman Rigenbach, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at Citizens' Opportunity to Address the City Council, and I have one comment that was sent to me by email today, if I could read that at this time. This was sent in by Mrs. Karen Fulford of Peoria. "First of all, I would like to thank each councilmember for their service on behalf of the people of Peoria. It does not go unnoticed or taken for granted. Your concern for each one of us who calls Peoria home is something you have in common with our Peoria firefighters. Your roles are different, but both are most needed. For our firefighters, they know, as do their spouses, children, and other loved ones, that there is always the possibility that with each call they answer, it could be their last. Each firefighter chose this profession, knowing that the bottom line could be my life or theirs. Their work hours are not nine to five, but a 24-hour shift, knowing broken sleep, if any at all, is the norm. Every third day, our firefighters do not go home. Most businesses close for holidays for at least some period of time, but no fire station closes for holidays. The firefighters know this and still say yes to serving all the people of Peoria at the expense of being a part of special family gatherings at these times. Reducing the number of fire stations and firefighters may make sense on paper, but not in real life. Before you decrease the number of fire stations and firefighters, accept Peoria Fire's invitation to be a firefighter for a day. Go out on their calls, see what they see, and see what they do before, during, and after a call. See how they invest their time in the fire station training, exercising, and doing maintenance to make sure they and their equipment are in tip-top condition for the next call. A vote for fire station and staff reduction is a vote for slower response time to wherever their help is needed. And their job minutes and seconds can make a difference between life and death. Property spared for a total loss. A reduced fire staff will also increase the risk to safety and lives of our Peoria firefighters. I ask you to look at the budget again and look for projects that could be postponed or delayed that will not directly jeopardize the lives of the people of Peoria and our firefighters. Another suggestion I would ask to be considered is one I have heard that some large businesses have made in the past several months. What percentage would it take for everyone to keep their jobs if everyone who is currently on our city payroll take a temporary pay cut? Thank you for your time and consideration of what I have written."
Thank you. Next item?
We do not have an executive session, so we would be adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Montalongo. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank Joe Deacon and the listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. This evening's special meeting is over, and we will be back in session next Tuesday.